Regular Board Meeting is held in the West Mifflin Borough Building, Council Chambers, 1020 Levinon Road, West Mifflin, PA. Meeting begins at 7:00 PM. Opening exercises, pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Esper, roll call.
Ahern.
Here.
De Senzo.
Here.
Donahoe.
Here.
Engler.
Here.
Mattis.
Here.
Squires.
Here.
Yu Haas.
Here.
Kastelnic.
Here.
Blazevich.
Here.
Two presentations, Dr. Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first presentation this evening is by Premier Power, an update given by Nikki Vidna and Matt Sanca.
Good evening, everybody. How are you? Is working okay?
Yep.
So I just wanted to come back and I know we talked last summer and we were a little bit nervous about whether or not we should have gone ahead and signed a future electric contract. And so we just had fantastic news and I wanted to just present market update to you just so you can see, you know, the impact of your decision of what it's made since the market has shifted. So for those of you, I think you know, most of you know me, Nikki Vidna with Premier Power Solutions. I am your account representative, your account consultant advisor. I took over for Matt Sanca. Matt had retired last year, but he's still my sidekick here, right? My assistant, right? Are you my assistant? He's a lifelong resident here. We've been working with the school district since 2005 and I'm pleased to take over his role and be your consultant and advisor on future contracts. So thank you for having us back. Just to give you a little bit of an energy update, the markets have increased significantly. So when we signed this contract last year, we're dealing with an energy crisis, as you all know, as you drive by the gas pumps, you know, every day. What you don't know yet, because it hasn't hit your pocketbook, is electric and natural gas prices have skyrocketed. And we just, we're feeling it in other areas, but we're going to continue to feel it for some time. We signed a contract, I put in this presentation that I gave off to you. On page three, there's a graph. And I have some numbers over to the left that show where energy prices are per calendar year today or yesterday, yesterday's market, and where they were when we signed this contract in August of the 11th, 2021. If you look over there, so you signed a contract, it begins in 2022, so the $103 a megawatt hour doesn't really affect you too much, but we want to concentrate on '23, '24, and '25 and '26 because you have a four-year contract. When we look at those values and the increase, I mean, you can see, you know, 2022 is at $36.35 a megawatt hour. It's $77 a megawatt hour. It's just, you know, the graph is just explains, it pictures worth a thousand words, right? I also put on here, you also have a natural gas contract, so I wanted to show you, we do have a natural gas contract that's in place until August of 2024. And natural gas prices on the next page, you can see how they have gone, you know, from $3, $3.50 maybe. Even, they were under $2 at a certain point, but even the future years, they're $2 and they were trading up to $9 until recently, when there was a, there was an explosion at a LNG plant in Texas. So that's keeping a lot of natural gas here that we would normally, we would be sending overseas. So we've seen some relief in natural gas prices, but that's only to the tune of, you know, over $6 today, not at $2 when you signed your last contract. Your contract price is $2.93, which is a bargain by today's prices. $6 is looking cheap to me, so we were, we were pressing, you know, $9, $10. And I just put some futures, the next page of the futures for natural gas just showing you, you know, we are, we are having a high near-term pricing that's going to go down 2023. And then the new resistance point for natural gas looks to be about $4.50. That's double of where you signed your last contract. So future contracts, you know, our contract's ending in 2024 in August. If we were to look at pricing that future start right now, you're already looking at a double of your budget for natural gas beginning in 2025, '24, '25 winter. So we're still keeping an eye on that. There's no, you know, need to go rushing into that right now, but it's definitely something to watch because, you know, things are changing. The energy space is changing, you know, with our current administration and energy policy, and we just have to keep an eye on it. So the good news is on the next page. I just did some averages of where energy pricing was when we signed and where it is today. And the average, multiplying it against your annual kilowatt hours or your annual megawatt hours, we're saving. If we would have waited to sign the contract today, if we would have said, hey, we want to wait, you know, it doesn't start until December of 2022, we sign a contract today, you would have lost $143,000. You know, you would have had to spend more. Your budget would have increased by that much. So I'm just pleased to, you know, and so we're talking for the term, you know, half a million dollars. So that's my good report that I have today. Good job. Thank you for listening to me, listening to us and our advice last year. You know, I couldn't predict a war in Ukraine and all of that, but energy markets were increasing and you made a good choice. So, any questions?
Thanks for the update. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Dr. Solomon, I know this is a long agenda, but I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Sandy Wells's retirement from the district. She's, she's been with the district for 24 years. She's a resident of West Mifflin. And just on behalf of the board and administration, want to say thank you and wish you all the best.
Thanks, Sandy.
This is Wells. I do have a few things here from the district and the board. Actually, Ford, this first one is a certificate for you. The next one is a card from everybody.
Thank you very much.
We have more flowers. And with all those flowers. We did have the last gift here for you as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome.
Enjoy, enjoy the time.
You can throw your alarm clock away now.
Three addendum items, Mr. Souls.
Yes, Mr. President, we have a few addendum items. Two under District Operations, A, we'd like to add the approval of the ATSI plans. It's recommended the board directors approve the 2023 ATSI plan for the West Mifflin area high school and also the West Mifflin middle school. Also under District Operations, B, I know it says D on our paper, but it's actually B, it is recommended the board directors approves the settlement agreement filed as 221-CV-01539-DSC as presented in the amount of $7,000. And finally, under number 11, Superintendent Report, Letter B, we have three facility uses for the middle school football conditioning, baseball, Beebe Valley baseball team, and also a champion parade celebration hosted by the West Mifflin Borough Recreation Department. Those are all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Souls. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kastelnic.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahern.
Yes.
De Senzo.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yu Haas.
Yes.
Kastelnic.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
For hearing of the citizens, public comment. In order to speak at this time, the following must be met. Must be a West Mifflin Whittaker or Duquesne resident. Matter must have been discussed through the proper education channel. Please direct comments to the board president and our superintendent. Your remarks are limited to three minutes per person. If you have questions about the agenda, we will cover those, we will try to cover those as we cover the agenda items as we go through the rest of the meeting. Margaret Bungard.
You come up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Please state your address.
3317 Cherry Street, West Mifflin. I'd like to bring forth the proposed property tax increase. The property tax increase was, the last time was in 2020, when all the schools were shut down and the taxes were raised, which I did not understand. But now you propose another tax increase in an economy where most people are struggling to pay their bills and they even put gas in their cars. I encourage the school board and the school district to please live within your means like the rest of the residents within the school district. The residents of West Mifflin and other communities that are part of the district. We work very hard for what we have. We do the right thing by owning a home and taking care of that home. It was not fair to us taxpayers to continuously get penalized for doing the right thing. So please reconsider the tax increase that you're proposing for this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Thomas.
Hello, my name's Paul Thomas and I live at 5125 Skylark Avenue in West Mifflin, lifetime resident. And I'm Mr. Blazevich, School Board Director. I recently had a email with Mr. Blazevich and it was the end of last month. And I give a brief recap of my email, my concerns for the residents of West Mifflin. Pertains to the 1.2 mil tax increase and the school business privilege tax. Many of you know that you see it on social media consistently about either there's 50% of the businesses not paying or somebody's blessed against it. That's about it as far as that goes. And it also brings in $750,000 a year. And so, the point is, I don't know if it's true or false as far as the amount of benefits that are paying. So I thought it was time to look into this a little bit. And I did some research on it. And after my research, I ended up in seeing that there was a proposed increase in taxes that I better look into this a little more. So that's when I contacted Mr. Blazevich. And he in turn passed me on my concerns on to Mr. Esper and Mr. Mattis. And so this last week, I just had a conversation with Mr. Esper. And I voiced my opinion to others to him and what I had seen on social media. And at this time, I don't know how well aware the residents are if it's business, school business privilege tax or not. So I don't want to misinterpret anything that Mr. Esper might have said to me. So I'm going to ask Mr. Esper if you would mind explaining to the people what you told me, put you on the spot here a little bit.
Yeah, that's okay.
And I didn't want to hear it from me and get misinterpreted somehow because I see it consistently on social media.
Mr. Thomas.
A lot of derogatory comments and don't like to see that for West Mifflin.
Yeah, I, I have no problem with that. It's on the agenda for tonight, so if it's okay when we get to that agenda item for Mr. Esper to explain it, is that okay?
Fine, I do.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Appreciate it. Karen Santora.
131 Castle Drive, West Mifflin. I'm here to talk to about the tax increase. My neighbors think that I'm on school board, which obviously I'm not, but they knocking on my door. Can you help us with the taxes? I live in Royal Highlands, which people today probably don't even know if that's out, but it's across from the post office. There is senior citizens, widows, widowers, and they're like panicking. Now, they're like, we just can't afford this anymore because two years ago you raised them quite a bit and now this year again. And it's like, they're just constantly, you know, and West Mifflin has several senior citizens. And it is tough for these, and myself, I'm on a fixed income. I've worked as a paraprofessional in this district for 43 years. I know the school district, so I understand. But how's it come a time when you have to cut the costs somewhere? I mean, and then half of your staff doesn't live in West Mifflin. They move out. So they're not bringing us revenue, but they're making top dollar. Now I understand that there was a new something passed that you have a no furlough clause. Well, if you have not enough students and too many teachers, then there should be a furlough. In the real world, you get laid off if there's no work. And I think this is a little bit overboard with these taxes. Now TJ's mills are 22 mills. West Mifflin is 25 mills. Well, if they can run a school district on 22 mills, then why can't we run one at 25? And we are the highest millage rate in elegant, one of the ninth highest in elegant economy with the millage rate. And that's just ridiculous. I mean, administrators, everybody's getting raises and the poor old people are paying. Now, when I started in 1971, which probably most of you people weren't even around, I started, I had to live in West Mifflin. And if I didn't, I was penalized. Now, I don't know when that stopped, but we have to start getting people that are going to be here to help us pay. Now granted, the borough did raise the taxes, but we raised it .6, not 1.19. And we get police protection, fire departments, ambulance, and our public works is excellent. We get the streets paved, we get the streets salted. We get, you know, we get everything. And the best garbage pickup anywhere. I mean, we have a great department and we have a park. What are you giving me to raise my taxes? There's no pool that we can use unless we pay, and that's only open during school. There's no library that we can use. So what am I getting for this tax increase? What are my neighbors getting? And I really wish you would reconsider.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Diane Stenesset.
2803 Colonial Lane Extension. I too would like to see under 6A through whatever letters for the tax increase voted against. We need to learn to live within our means. We're dipping into the unbalanced, balance the budget because you can't send an unbalanced budget to the state. On page two, the insurance coverage. It's my understanding the total increase is $54,453. Everybody's insurance went up, homeowners and so forth. That's why these seniors cannot afford a tax increase. On page three, item six and seven, the finalization of the evaluations of Mr. Souls and Dr. Solomon. I think all evaluations for administrators who are under that app that get that nice little chunk of change raise need to be posted along with their contracts. Should be posted on the website. On number 11, authorization for administration to advertise RFP for district solicitor. I ask that at least five of you people have enough sense to say yes. Under finance, those two tax appeals for over $3 million. What are those areas? What does that cover? Ford Business Machine, we still have a year on our contract, so they want us to engage in another five-year contract, which we have one left, and at the price of $171,492 a year, which is $6,300 increased from last year, from the previous contract. It was at $165,189.84. On page six, under the tax collector's report, if you add all the delinquents, that comes to $412,389.90. Plus, we just got $600,000 for Emerson, which is close to, which is more than enough money that we shouldn't have to raise taxes. And under the one, I'm certainly hoping that it's a typo that the commission on $26,440.78 isn't $27,709. I hope that's a typo. If not, seriously?
Thank you, Diane. Teresa Sekley.
Teresa Sekley, 110 Main Entrance Drive. First of all, the tax increase. My old senior citizen neighbors cannot afford it. Me as a parent realize that everything's going up. I can give you an example. My groceries went up $120 for two weeks. But that's a lot of money. People do not have it to pay it. But in the same respect, since we're giving out raises to administrators, I hope and pray that when our teachers' contract comes up, you guys think of them too. So I know we're going to be with a big jump step next year with a bunch of teachers jumping up. I don't want to get creamed next year. I don't want the senior citizens to get creamed. But if there's a way we can avoid this tax increase, some of these people aren't going to be able to put food on their table for their kids. I mean, even though it's $20 a month, that's $20. That might be some fun activity some kid's not going to get to do because we have to pay taxes. There's ways we can save money. We saw that last week when we found out that Kevin went on Google or, and found things cheaper and saved us money. You know, we got to do our research and find better numbers. The other thing I want to talk about is for the district solicitor. I know everybody's going to decide to do what they want to do, but I'm just going to share my personal experience that a lot of board members don't know. I have a special needs daughter. Her IEP is violated all the time. I have reached out to Kresha personally before getting an attorney and suing this district. Kresha has solved my problems. She's very educated with special education. She knows the laws. She knows how to talk to parents to save this district money. Because I can tell you at least three times last year, I had evidence, I had proof, and I could have come after this district. But she stopped me. And if you get somebody else in here, I don't know if they're going to be as educated and, you know, going to be able to calm me down to make me not want to. I just hope that the decision is made that you guys either keep, you know, Kresha and Mr. Mattis, because Mr. Mattis had the bus company on the phone the one day for me when the bus dropped my kid off on 885. I called Gary, I'm like, Gary, I'm ready to sue. I'm done. You can't leave my kid off on the frickin' highway and think that it's okay. Not once, not twice, but three times they did it. So like I said, please don't do this tax increase. These old people can handle it. You know, they're worried about paying for their medications. Everything's going up. All of you guys have families. The one senior citizen called and told me she spent $600 a month for her prescriptions. And they're going up. So don't increase the taxes. Quit giving people raises except for our teachers who definitely deserve one.
Thank you. Five information items are on six, general fund budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under six, general fund budget, we have items A through I. Everything was discussed last week. The final budget amount was $61,105.57.
$61 million?
$61 million, I'm sorry. It's been a long day. And nothing else has changed from last week. I will, if you'd like me to, just address the business privilege tax since it's in here. There's actually two taxes that businesses pay in West Mifflin for the school district. It's the business privilege tax and the mercantile tax. You pay either or, some pay both, but not on the same income. Both taxes are self-reporting taxes, which means that we can't make you pay. So there are businesses that don't pay. I refute that it's 50% of the businesses. I personally begin at five or six businesses that names, and I've looked into it and they're all either paying on a payment plan or in some form of litigation. It's just like an earned income tax, you get the form. If you don't pay, you eventually get caught in legal tax services, taking a number of businesses that don't pay. I'm sure there's more that haven't paid, but they're working diligently. There's nobody who's being let go. There's nobody who's, you know, hey, we know them. We're not, we're not going to go after them. It's a long process. It does bring in a lot of money in delinquents, but what I've seen over the last number of years is the current business privilege and mercantile taxes increase and the delinquents has decreased as they find more people who are either unaware or not paying and they go through the process. Anything to add, Karen?
I don't, I mean, our office really does not handle the business privilege tax issue. That's handled by the delinquent tax collector. We did though, get involved earlier this year. That attorney for that group came in and spoke with the school board. I believe the school board was comfortable with the process that was being used to collect those taxes. So I think if there's any real questions of the board or even the public at some point, if appropriate, they could come here to speak publicly. But they handle all of that collection.
I'd like to comment towards what you just told me. Those two things you just looked at, did I like clearly?
Well, public comment is over. Apologize for that.
Well, that's why I let him speak. So just about $515,000, LPS had actually hired somebody to take care of this. Those two comments made to me.
I don't know what you're talking about.
I told me that the business privilege tax came in right now at $515,000. Okay, the first six months.
Okay.
Okay, and keeping $750,000 for the year. Okay, so it's increasing. Well, I'm saying it's increasing.
Okay.
You're getting more revenue. Okay, and the other thing was that LPS had hired somebody to actually do this and go after them.
Well, no, no, they hired another employee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but that's their-
They're the delinquent tax collector.
Yes.
Yeah, right, right.
Joe, is that your mic?
I don't know. I'll shut it off.
It's better now.
It's not. You think it's?
It's better now.
It's not better now. I don't know what it is.
I think they might be all turned off.
I turned it back down to what it was, so I apologize.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Donahue. For a second. For the number six, general fund budget agenda item. There's a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All of them vote?
Yeah.
It's for all of them.
To open a vote.
This isn't a vote. This is just a motion.
Yeah. To open a vote.
Correct.
Second.
Second, Mr. Squires.
I have a-
Questions or comments?
I have a few comments.
Thank you, Tony.
As I stated in our previous discussions concerning this budget, I just cannot support a tax increase and therefore the budget as well that burden, simply just burdens our taxpayers without us showing any concession whatsoever. We, you know, it's not a criticism of Mr. Esper or- or administration, or even Mr. Dunne, who I know spent a lot of time on this. But, you know, I believe a majority of this board acted irresponsibly by voting against the opportunity for a potential furlough months ago. And not saying that I'm advocating for that, but we, as a board, cannot show the taxpayers present any other option other than a tax increase. So therefore, you know, in this situation, I believe the burden should be shared. And right now, we're leaving the taxpayers solely to hold the bag. And we could have, and this is my seventh budget that I've worked on as a member of this board. And at all six previous years, we've allowed the administration to have that option to furlough. It's a formality. They sent letters, because it's a contractual obligation to send the union teachers letters. We've always passed that line item. And now we're sitting here, and we're forced to vote on a budget with a tax increase because we have no other option. And I don't think that was responsible of the board sitting here to the taxpayers of this community. So I would be voting no to those two motions.
The administrators didn't give their raises back. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Blazevich. I have a statement I wanted to make and hopefully address a cop wire sheet that we brought up. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Esper for all the hard work and late nights that he offered preparing this budget. And as we invoke whether or not to raise the millage rate, is it important to note that an increase in reimbursement in the Homestead Act will most likely minimize any impact on many homeowners that are on a fixed budget. Certainly not all, but many. The increase, as outlined by Mr. Esper, will mean that any homeowner with an assessment of $50,000 to $60,000 on their home should see no increase in their taxes. Those with an assessment of $50,000 to $60,000 and above will have their tax bills offset by this amount. So someone with $110,000 assessed home would probably see an approximate $5 per month increase, not 20. I'd also like to say that no school board director ever wants to raise taxes. We realize that everybody's personal budgets are tight. We don't want to add to that string. However, it is the responsibility of the board to fund the budget to maintain quality education standards and all of the auxiliary benefits, such as athletics, music, and others in our West Midland School District, thereby providing the best education that we can for our students. I am fully aware that not everyone sees issues and spending the same way. I understand that. As a result, getting nine members to agree on something as big as a $60 million budget is extremely difficult. However, over the past several years, before I got elected to the board, with the help of the administration and the previous boards and building sales, among other things, they worked to strengthen our fund balance from just $1.5 million approximately, which is just 2% of the budget, to just over recently $4 million. Now, that $4 million is just about 6% of the budget, which is at the lower end of the recommended minimum for school districts, which they usually recommend anywhere from 6% to 10%. So we are barely at the bottom end of that and dipping into the fund balance further will take us further into danger. Balancing a budget using the minimal fund balance can only exacerbate this problem going forward and create future problems for the district. It should be noted that West Midland has been called out in the past by auditors for balancing the budget using a fund balance. On a final note, I've heard from a few citizens, including some this evening, in fairness, that West Midland has the highest taxes around. And this is not true. While we all might wish that our millage rate was lower, we are in the lower half of all the districts in our general area in the southern half of Allegheny County. This can be verified by anyone who wants to check by Googling "millage rates Allegheny County", then selecting the second item there, which says "School District Tax Millage 2021 Allegheny County". That will give you an opportunity to check the millage rates for each district in Allegheny County for 2021. It also gives you the opportunity to check every previous year, all the way back to 2000. I mention this not to justify the millage rate increase because that does not justify the increase, but just to provide correct information to our citizens. Two other items. I know that, I am quite aware that Jefferson Hills is at 22 mills, and we are at approximately 26 mills. But please note that they get $1.5 million for each mill that they get, and we get one. So our 26 mills is approximately $26 million for their budget. Their 22 mills is approximately $33 million for their budget. So there is a big difference there. And finally, the one other statement that was made is that the borough increased by 0.6 mills while we're going 1.2. Yet our budget is approximately three times the size of the borough. So if you take proportions into account, that makes a little bit of a difference. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Before I do this, can I just ask that if you're gonna vote no, list the items, vote no, and then say yes to everything else, just so I can keep track of it?
Sure. Roll call, Mr. Esper?
Ahearn.
Because of the amount that will be set off offset by the Homestead Act, I vote yes.
DeSanto.
No to six A and six B, yes to everything else.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
No to A, B, and C, yes to everything else.
Mattis.
No to A and B, yes to everything else.
Squires.
Because of the help from the Homestead Act, I vote yes to all.
Yuhas.
I vote yes.
Kostelnik.
No.
No to what, all of them?
I'm sorry, no to A, B, and C. Yes to the rest.
And Blazevich.
Yes.
Mr. President, A and B passed on a five-to-four vote. C passed on a seven-to-two vote. And D through I passed on a nine-to-zero vote.
Seven Board Secretary Business Managers report.
Thank you. Everything, items one through 12 were discussed last week. I did get the number for the insurance. I have no idea what's causing that. And that was $448,241 for item number three. And we did discuss giving approval for the shipping container for youth football at the middle school field. So that's number 13, which was added.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Donahue. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Engler. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one comment. It pertains to number 11. I've also expressed my concern for just singling out our district solicitor when, you know, if we're being, we just passed the budget with a tax increase. I think this is an appropriate time to take a look at everything, every professional service that we employ. And, you know, I believe there's increases in our insurance costs. I mean, there's reason to look at not only our solicitor. If that, in fact, passes, then let's open it up and take a look at everything across the board and be completely transparent. So that's all I have to say about that.
Any other questions? Mr. Yuhas?
Mr. DeSanto, it's one of that number 11. Same thing. I just think it's more of a political than it is justifiable. I think the people I have are taking it, too. As I said, if we're gonna open them up and talk about raising taxes and everything else, we should look at everything. And that goes to all our professional services and contracts. And I think that's one area that we probably don't do enough of because I think of sometimes relations or politics.
Yeah, and to echo what you said, I'm struggling. I've had individual conversations with a lot of the people that are gonna support number 11. I've yet to hear but maybe one really solid reason.
They were over budget. It's a solid reason. They were over budget.
So other than this being a political thing, I really don't understand why we're looking elsewhere.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Seems like when I sit down with this... Ahearn.
No to number 11, yes to everything else.
DeSanto.
No to 11, yes to everything else.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
No to 11, yes to everything else.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
No to three, four, and five, and 11. And yes to everything else.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
And Blazevich.
Yes.
All right, Mr. President. Number 11 passed on a five-to-four vote. Items three, four, and five passed on an eight-to-one vote. And everything else passed on a nine-to-zero vote. Is that right? B Finance. We got B Finance, items one through five on page three. One, two, and three were discussed last week. And four and five were real estate appeals that were discussed in executive session.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Donahue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Squires. Questions or comments?
Did you want to address this? Because the next comments about four and five.
Four and five.
These were settlement agreements with-
Our question was where they were, where the properties were.
What are the properties?
I, you know, I don't.
Look at the lot and block numbers.
Oh, no, I just want to make sure.
Put me in the lot and block numbers.
The lot and block numbers are there.
So I have to look on the website? Can't you tell me who these belong to?
I don't have that information here because we normally just list the website. If you're so interested in that, there is ability to go to, look at it.
Are you serious?
We don't have the information.
You've done it before.
I don't have the lot and block numbers. If you would like to know those, we'll look them up. We can hold the meeting up.
It's not in front of us. So we don't want to give you incorrect information.
Nobody's trying to hide anything. The lot and block numbers are listed there.
We don't want to give you incorrect-
Chris is looking them up right now.
Keep looking them up.
They're not trying to hide anything. We're just saying I don't have-
Inconsequential.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Ahearn.
Yes.
DeSanto. Donahoe.
Yes.
Engler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas. Kostelnik.
Yes.
And Blazevich.
Yes.
Seven, C, purchasing and contracting. Items one through eight were discussed last week. Items nine through 18, I'll just go over them. I can't remember which one was discussed in committees. ML Schedules is item number nine. That's gonna take place of Due Solutions, which is our event scheduling software. And that's roughly a savings of about $5,500, I believe. Item number 10 we discussed last week is a contract for five years with Ford Business Machines for new copiers. Number 11 was discussed. I can't remember if we talked about that one. Incident IQ. This is forms management IT help desk to keep inventory of the technology within the district. That's gonna replace Issue Track, and it has much more functionality. Item number 12, this is Sabas Learning Company. This is technology integration. We did purchase the program, which was the reading series. This will do some additional integration, which was not part of the package. That is for six years. Item 13 is a quote from Borderland for LineY, school manager. And that is a security system for the laptops for the kids. Number 14, Power School. This is a renewal we do every year. 14 is for Schoology. And that's $16,238 for next year. Number 15 is another Power School license for the SIS Enterprise Management Service. That's a price of $68.5548. Number 16 is another Power School quote. This is Enrollment Express eCollect forms and SIS data management. And this is part of the thing. We use that to collect the data for the state. And those are, that is the program that we do. We're doing online enrollment for new students. Number 17 and 18 relate to our telephone system. One is a hardware-software support, and one is a labor contractor. It's something worth a break. Number 18.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Donahue.
Second.
Second by Mr. DeSanto. Questions or comments?
I had a question on number 11. I haven't had the chance to talk to Mr. Solz about this. Sorry. I think we talked about how there's two different issue tracks that we purchased. And I think that we were looking to see if Incident IQ could potentially replace both of them. Yeah, does it replace both or just the one?
At this time, it's only gonna replace the one.
We can see, okay, about getting that done in the future. Awesome.
We sat through a demo with Mr. Gatz the other day to get that information.
Great. Yeah, I checked out their website. It looks like a nice product.
I have a question about number 10, Mr. Solz. The copiers for Business Machines. Can you explain that a little bit? And one of my questions is, is this something that, if we needed to, because my mindset is, we have, everybody has laptops. I don't understand necessarily why we would need to print so much, frankly. As time goes on and we realize we don't need to print as much, are we able to take copiers out of this and reduce our costs?
Yes, yes, we're able to look at this every year Yes, yes, we're able to do, look at this every year, and, uh, with the new purchase, uh, we'll go from can, uh, chronic, uh, to, uh, cannon machines, and we're going up to upgrade the speed, and also the toner is made within the United States, which we had a toner problem over the last year, and I think you could tell you, we had a problem getting toner for our computer, or for our printers, and the upgrade that's free, we actually reduced the number of machines and upgraded the quality of speed that our teachers and whoever needs to copy will have that capability. With this comes software, it's Final Cut Pro, a teacher can print, or anybody in the district can print from any copier in the district by swiping their ID badge, which helps with confidentiality, uh, problems of just sending something to the copiers sitting there waiting, as well as the, um, also gives us the ability to monitor how much copies are being made and what machines are producing the most copies.
And I, I did, I, I looked through the contract, and this is twenty-nine copiers total, so I, I just added them up, and I, I just didn't know if anybody knew that.
Yes.
You know, there was, there was one thing I'd like to add to this, um, I think it needs noting, on number sixteen, you see that, um, the third thing in that list, its purchase is the SIS state data validation. Joanne DeClaire has found somewhere each year between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars that we're spending different places for students that aren't currently residing in West Smithland, which they were, but then they moved because they were going charter school, that was just the first year, and I think this is the third year, so I just wanna say of all the things that we're purchasing here, that, that is the one that's bringing us back money, and it's worth it to wait on both, so I, I just wanted to point that out to everybody.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes to all but number ten.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Mister President, number ten passed on an eight to one vote, everything else passed on a nine to zero vote.
Thank you, eight financial reports.
Everything was discussed last week, at the executive session, I mean, at the, uh, work session, the, um, that twenty-seven thousand dollars is, is a total that includes a delinquent, includes a delinquent, uh, real estate, reality, real estate tax, which was three hundred and seventy thousand, so it's not twenty-seven commissions on twenty-six thousand.
That's for the whole year then?
Yeah, well, that's for the whole, all, all of them together.
Okay.
Cause they don't break it down, so we gotta put it somewhere.
Oh, I see.
So, the twenty-seven is correct, but it's not for this period, it's for the whole year?
No, no, the twenty-seven's for this period, but it also includes the three hundred and seventy thousand is commission on the delinquent, which is a, which is a bigger number.
Gotcha. And, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donahue, second, second by Mrs. A-hair, questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Nine invoice bill payable, um, I believe only, there was only number one on there last week, um, legal, we received another bill from Legal Tax Service, and our monthly retainer from our solicitor.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Kostelnik.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue, questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
That concludes my report, Mister President.
Thank you, Mr. Esper. Ten, District Operations, Mr. Souls.
Thank you, Mister President, we have two addendum items, we have item A, the A T S I plans for the middle school and high school, and also B, the approved settlement agreement and the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Donahue.
Second.
Second by Mr. Squires, questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Eleven Superintendent's reports.
Yes, Mister President, under Superintendent's report, A, we have the homeschool visitors from May and June, from, uh, the report, under B, we have buildings and grounds for facility use as presented, as well as the buildings and grounds addendum for the three that we ran at the beginning of the meeting, under C, we have our, uh, professional conferences as presented as well.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Squires, questions or comments?
I'm just building the ground out of comment.
Hmm?
Mrs. Wells, question for you, I was up at the stadium today and uppered the track, and I, and that was pretty much underneath warranty, is that a warrant right now?
Yes.
Is that, continue, my ass is, I have the, I was up there today and I talked to a gentleman that were working on it, manager, and he said this, I asked him what, why this happened, and he said because of the blue, the color, and he said the dirt, he said, hey, it's like, you're gonna spray wash it, he said that basically if you want to keep that color nice and bright, he said, at least every two years, I've done it every year, come up and do that, is that, would that be something the color needs, or if there's a cost, if there's a cost, that's something we should look at, because, he said you want it to look like this and maintain nice?
Yeah, I talked, I talked to him too, and he called me after.
Turn that off.
Yeah, it's making us very.
Hit the red button.
It's gonna stop recording.
Oh, you know what, you gotta leave it on, man.
Turn your microphones on.
Well, then it's not gonna record, if you're talking in the mics.
Just turn it on when you're, when you're talking.
That can't be.
You have to turn it on when you talk.
Okay.
Does anybody have a laptop near it?
Yeah.
Your cell phone?
It's not.
Just turn it on.
Judy, not Judy.
It's your cell phone, no, no.
It's somebody's.
Somebody's, yeah.
No, I put my back on.
Just turn it on when you talk.
Yeah.
Yeah. Whatever, it's off.
Turn your mics back on, I think it might have been a cell phone.
I'm sorry, fuck that.
Mine was, it's been awful.
Um, so, yeah, they're, they're already cleaning the track, and I, I probably spoke to him after you did, I was up there first thing this morning, and then I was up there later this afternoon, and, and they are, um, I, I can tell you it looked a lot better this afternoon than it did this morning, so they've been working on it for five days, and I, I asked him about the process, and the process is, um, basically they're using a pad on a scrubber to scrub it, pressure wash it, and then suction it, um, and I asked him, could we pressure wash it, and he said the only thing with us, if we pressure wash it, it would have lines on it, but, um, I did, I have pictures if anybody wants to see them after the meeting, but, um, it's definitely a difference, and, and I said to him the same thing, I mean, it's taken him five to six days to clean it.
Yeah.
Um, and he, he said the same thing to me, it would be something that every two years would probably be done, so the warranty was five years, so we're within the warranty period that they are doing it for free.
Should we probably go more on it?
Um, if, if they would be willing to come back and do it if it's done again, yes.
Yeah, I just wonder if we get, if we find out there's a cost to doing that.
I, I asked him, I said, obviously, you're getting paid to do this, but we're not paying you, I said, do you know what it costs, and he told me, yeah, so we can check into that with the, um.
The company?
The companies.
Yeah. But who pays the investment?
Yeah, and I, I told him, I said, you know, we had a blue track prior to this, and we didn't do that, I mean, it didn't really look like that until we were ready to replace it, right? So, he, um, he says, he just said with the blue tracks, that, that's something, I mean, I, when I first went up there, I thought that they were actually spraying blue on it, because it looked so much different, so.
Yeah.
But, that's what.
I'll just, we had a conversation this morning, and I said, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes to everything except C, I abstain.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
And Blazevich.
Yes.
Mister President, uh, eleven, C, passed on an eight to one vote, everything else passed on a nine to zero vote.
Eight to zero vote.
Eight to zero vote, yeah. I'm sorry, eight to zero vote, yeah.
Twelve, Professional Personnel, Mr. Souls.
Yes, Mister President, we have, under A, Retirements, we have one, uh, professional to move their retirement date up a year under the Early Retirement Incentive Program, and under B, Hires and Transfers, we talked about those during the work session and as presented.
Do I have a motion?
No.
Motion by Mrs. Kostelnik.
Second.
Second by Mrs. A-hair, questions or comments?
I have a question, Mr. Souls, when you say, um, benefits, employee, they, they were already in the Early Retirement Incentive Program, they're just moving their year up.
That is correct.
This is not an additional.
This is not an additional.
They were already granted that, they're just doing it a year early.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Thirteen, Non-Certified Personnel.
Yes, we have items A through C, Leave of Absence, we have two employees requesting a leave of absence, we have two reservations, one from the E S Y program, I'm sorry, both employees from the, uh, E S Y program, and under C, Hires and Transfers, we also have two parent educators getting involved with the summer program.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Yuhas.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue, questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Fourteen, Athletic Personnel.
Yes, Mister President, we have items A through C, under A, we have resignation and terminations, we have four coaches under the resignation, we have B, hires, we have four coaches listed under there, and under other, we have a coach being, uh, as a volunteer soccer coach effective Friday, July, June twenty-fourth, as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Mattis.
Second.
Second by Mr. DeSanto, questions or comments? Roll call.
A-hair.
Yes.
DeSanto.
Yes.
Donahoe.
Yes.
Angler.
Yes.
Mattis.
Yes.
Squires.
Yes.
Yuhas.
Yes.
Kostelnik.
Yes.
Blazevich.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Souls, uh, fifteen Board Presidents' Correspondents, uh, I corresponded with Mr. Thomas and probably put him in contact with Mr. Esper, like you said, and, and Mr. Mattis, and, uh, that was all of my correspondence. Uh, sixteen, Executive Session Discussion, uh, personnel and legal matters were discussed. Seventeen, Board Reports, most of the committee reports were given last week, uh.
I'm sorry, yeah, I just wanted to mention about the, uh, we, we mentioned last week, the athletic, the Hall of Fame Committee met, um, and we picked the, uh, next year's class of inductees, the Hall of Fame inductees will be recognized on Friday, September ninth at our home football game, prior to the, the start of the game, um, the class for next year is as follows, Samantha Drosnik, class of nineteen ninety-eight softball, Chris Hester, class of two thousand and eleven basketball, Jessica Pitts, class of two thousand and eleven